To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our
Start with the yard of your mouth. Hannah Wells.
Make sure.
I'm Commissioner. Good afternoon. Right, I'm thinking here I must remember to Renee's little. This is what I told him that she built with her husband and I'm very, very happy to present this to her. She's had a rough couple months and so I feel like this is such a great reward for her and I'm happy to do it. Appreciate being able to give this reward and for her to be able to help someone kind of stay beautiful.
And what we find which of us have had is to stand up here and take a picture of Commissioner Sullivan.
One. Us here where you.
Yeah.
Fair enough. They did, yeah.
That's a little tall. Okay. Let me just scooch over just a little bit. Yes, just. Okay, raise your hands. One, two, three. One, two, three. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We have a brief video on the first tee four corners.
Oh, sorry.
Our program director. No, go ahead. Please go.
Share that to the back there.
Tom Yost believes golf is a game for all. No matter age, background, or limitations. That's why he has dedicated his career as a PGA professional to coaching and growing the game, using creative programs to make it accessible to anyone, setting the bar for the Sun Country Section and his fellow PGA members.
I think that's what drives Tom each and every day. How can he make a difference in somebody's life? And the game of golf is the tool by which he's able to do that.
Tom used that strategy when he applied for the original charter that brought the first tee to San Juan County and then expanded into the four corners.
I, as a parent, really appreciate the life skills that he teaches, you know, the nine values of the first tee program, honesty, integrity, sportsmanship, all those things that the kids not only use on the golf course, they're good skills that they learn and keep with them throughout their life.
I like it. Being on the Navajo Nation, there's tons of kids that wouldn't have access to golf if it weren't for Tom Yost in the first tee.
It's pretty cool to see the program grow from 50 kids that first year and now we're up over 12,000 with all of our green grass facility programs, our in-school programs, our after-school programs. He teaching interleague was an opportunity to get kids now into the competitive aspect, which was really something that was a huge void.
Tom brings that same passion for coaching to his weekly women's clinic, helping his students not only enjoy the game, but also the friendships they build with each other.
But it's not your standard lesson. He treats that group as a team, which I think builds cohesion, makes them want to keep coming back, builds friendships, all that kind of stuff that comes around it.
No, it's just a fun, engaging environment where ladies are very interactive in what they want to know, how they want to know it. They sort of say, hey, this is what we need to work on today and we go from there.
Part of Tom's commitment to helping his community through golf is finding groups that would benefit most from getting involved in the game. And this fall, Tom expanded his programming to include coaching our nation's veterans at the PGA home. If that wasn't enough, Tom also coaches Special Olympians, another passion of his since childhood.
Every year we do a six to eight week program where we provide instruction to all levels of Special Olympics participants and Sean being the highest level, we were really excited when he was asked to play in the USA Games.
Sean and Tom traveled to Orlando to compete in the 2022 USA Games and returned to New Mexico with incredible memories and a gold medal.
I just kept myself in my mind with it, taking deep breaths, looking at routine game, I'm the last thing, I give him a hug. Tell me you did a job. Did I got gold? That was awesome, man. That was pretty, pretty amazing.
In addition to serving his community through player development programs, Tom serves the Sun Country PGA under the same passion. He's currently the section's vice president.
Good. Very good. If it's near and dear to his heart, he's going to fight for it. He's fought and fought for growing the game of golf. He just embraces the PGA badge, what it stands for. He uses the core values of the first tee to enhance the lives of all the kids and adults that he touches.
I think it just goes to show the character of person that he is and more importantly, how he just wanted to be able to give back to the game of golf.
If you know Tom, you know how excited he is about the game of golf and how much he loves it and what he's been able to do for player development, both in the region and in the section is just tremendous and is helping grow the game immeasurably.
Surreal to think about, but you know, this game has impacted a lot of people's lives and to be the one that brings programs to these people, you know, it's really fulfilling.
Stop. Last month, I'm Jay, I'm Mary, Trump, and you. Beings, this is a national award, recognizing, you know, for over 18 years of the first team where Pat and I always brought excellence to our covering.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks for all you guys do.
Well, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation that's honoring the high school football team. So I'd like to ask the coach.
Hey, guys. Thank you, guys, for having us. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
It's seniors.
Yeah. Will porno step up? Argue for it. Sam step up? One, two, three, and two. We have 12.
Is honoring the High School's school football team, whereas the High School football team won the 2022 ORA State Football Championship on November 22. And whereas the High School of Wildcats, the high school fighting 13th, it's Wildcats Stadium. Whereas this championship is the first championship for 56 years since Diddy Jow in 1966. Now therefore being solved, the county commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, hereby declare December 6, 2022, as Munda School Football Team Day in San Juan County, Michigan, under their first big football championship in 1956.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah. The mic's getting. What?
Get the paint can out tonight. Put your knees underneath there. So, okay.
Simply by, so are there any innovations?
Chair, we do have one change in presenter tonight. Item number five.
And I have a motion to.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? She carries, then I'll go ahead and read off the consent. Consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes of November 1st, 2022. Do consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes of November 15, 2022. Consideration of approval of I-23 budget adjustment number six, resolution number 22, 23, 37.
Need to approve. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. She carries, and we'll go ahead and move on to new business. We have consideration of radio console upgrades for the 911 Dispatch Center, Nicole Brown.
Can I join you? I have my child. Pictures, specific contact for you guys. As you know, I'm with the 911 Dispatch Center and we are in the combined center for that's for all the fired EMS and enforcement. Next slide. So part of the way that we do that, a big component of that is our radio system. So it's a cooperative effort with the Office of Emergency Management. Charles Rush, who probably all know, is amazing and maintains our radio systems. I have a set all that up. So just a little background, our old system was purchased in 2006. It's worked really well for us for 17 years. We love it. It's a great system, but it's no longer being maintained by Motorola. So we can't buy our different parts or keep it up to date. So we need a whole new radio console system. So this is just a little bit of what the radio consoles look like right now and how our dispatchers use them. So it is how the dispatchers can tell which top group they're on, which channel they're talking to. That's how we turn on all of our firefighters. So they're very vital to the operations of our center. Um, we, I think we related with Mr. Rush. Charles did a lot of research about which systems would work best and unfortunately we got several quotes and we are asking for a budget adjustment of $544,000, $972 to cover the quoted prices for the upgrade for radio consoles with an added 10%. It's like, this will push us into the future and hopefully those radio consoles will be maintained for several years to come, just like our previous, and help us better support our community. Entertain any questions.
For the information, so you said it's been since 2016?
Yeah.
So lots changed since then.
A lot has changed. We're going to go pretty, pretty far into.
And will you have the same type of screens that they use?
I.
Yes, they'll be very similar.
Very similar.
How many, how many phones will it take care of?
It'll take care of 11 positions.
Right now we have 11 dispatch positions with about 16 to 17 channels. Charles. That they talk. Come and talk to the mic.
He said 11, 16, about 16 to 17 channels on the position.
Madam Chair. Yeah, this new console system or the console system we have now, we're just basically updating it with new equipment. We, we have 11 dispatch positions. We have approximately 60 to 70 radio channels that we, we connect to. This is, this actually a fairly large communications console system because we're a combined system. We dispatch for every, you know, the police, the fire, EMS, everybody with it and everything. This, this vote not only gives us the, will give us all the positions that we need, it also allow for us to replace the systems at the backup center also, which are also part of this system, you know, and not only that was the new system, it'll make it to where the two systems can actually communicate with each other and leverage each other's resources, which is very nice.
And that's something that's important. We're, we don't have a 911 center in our area that we can defer to with our backup. So we have to have our own backup center. So this is a really big, important part of the upgrade.
How much training is going to be?
John and I are probably going to go to Lincoln, Nebraska for probably a three-day class on, on setting up and maintaining the consoles. We're also going to have a representative from there come out here for a three-day training here also. So they'll have three-day screenings here also for dispatchers. They'll have all things.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, this is probably more for Mr. Stewart. Normally, we're pretty good about planning things out. I mean, we have a 30-year capital plan. Why are we now doing 500?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beckstead, we do have the 30-year capital plan, but it's specific to San Juan County. I like it all, system departments. We don't have the communication authority included in that. I think when Mr. Brown came on board for evaluation of all the systems at Communications Authority, in fact, and we're going to bring this to you as part of this conversation. It's part of their fiscal year budget requests for next year. But given that this is end, end of life out of warranty equipment, we thought it would be prudent to do that now. Mr. Cox was kind enough to update our tracking spreadsheet that shows you what we have available funding for clean communications and EMS tax. And we have a less than a billion dollar cash balance that exists today. So we thought it would be prudent to do that now to allow them to move forward with the purchase. Fortunately, they're under some state contracts and that would allow them to, to get that installed and trained on it and up and running as soon as possible. The lesson we would want is for them to have catastrophic, catastrophic failure of the period of use.
So this is all money that's in the here.
It's within the combined communications and EMS fund. So if you were to approve this action tonight, we'd have to follow up with a budget adjustment.
I'm in San Francisco here in Nebraska, so I'm from the United States. So I think.
We're looking at that on March, April date.
Questions or comments?
So I guess what happens if we don't approve it?
We continue to work with our old system as long as it will.
Then it might not come to your house when you call 911.
Actually, what we probably defer to is everything being relayed by phone, which would cause significant delays instead of the immediacy of the region.
There's always a lot of concern about security. Is, will this be even quite secure in the full operation?
Yeah, everything behind secure doors is secure. Everything locked, locked sites and everything like that. And it's, it's an internal system that within the back. The backup center is within the airport and it's controlled by also between airport security also and the, the dispatch center naturally are locked down also.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the video console upgrade by the address.
First and second, any other discussion? Very none? All in favor? Opposition? Very none. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, number two, we have consideration of approval resolution number 22, 23, 31. Approving amendments to lease agreements pertaining to the industrial revenue bond for San Juan Solar, that was the replacement project, San Juan Generation Station. And we got Mr. Kelton.
Yes, I'm the Madam Chair. I was going to just introduce. Over to Mr. Kelton. Although he could probably have a few wanted to. I'm happy to go forward.
Well, I'll go ahead and introduce him then. Madam Chair Commissioners, the developer, DE Shaw Renewable Investments LLC, took over for photo solve the three San Juan solar projects that closed in 2021. It has requested that the IRB lease agreements be amended in that project so that the completion date of the projects is extended from June 1st, 2024 to December 3rd, 2024. And that the notice information for the developers updated since it changed over. Additionally, the developer has requested the county consent to the assignment of the Series B project from San Juan Solar LLC to San Juan Solar One LLC to help in simplifying some of the financing considerations associated with funding the, the project. Completed for consideration are, number one, a resolution approving the amendment to the three IRB lease agreements. Two, the forms of amendments to lease agreements. And three, the proposed form of assignment of the Series B project from San Juan Solar LLC, San Juan Solar One LLC. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kelton if you have any questions.
Madam Chair Commissioners, Phil did a great job summarizing what's before you today. Essentially, all that is being requested of the developer at this time is to amend the IRB leases for the three San Juan Solar IRB projects to extend it from June 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, which should give them more time to complete the project and still secure the exemptions afforded under the IRB act for prospective to often take the tax releases. Does those exemptions relate to the state portion of those taxes? The other aspect of the amendments would be to update the information so that photo solves information is removed and replaced with the information for DE Shaw Renewable Investments. The second item is the assignment of the Series 2022A project from the, or no, it's a policy, let me backtrack that a little bit. It would be the assignment of all the development companies' rights to the Series 2022 the San Juan Solar projects to the development company for the Series 2022A San Juan Solar project. So essentially, all that would be happening is the upstream entities affiliate for the Series A project can now also be responsible for the Series B. I stand for any questions on these items and we also have Noah Eckert from DE Shaw Renewable Investments, who's here to answer the question regarding.
Turn the mic. Noah Eckert with DE Shaw Renewable Investments here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
My question is, so this would be a six-month extension, correct?
That's correct.
What's the chances on another, you needing another extension later on?
I think the chances are relatively low. You know, in the power business, these projects are long cycled. They take many years to work through. But we have an obligation under the contract with PNM to get the project online by May of 2024. So we are heavily incented. There are penalties if we do not get the project online by May of 2024. So, but in that contract, should we have challenges, PNM wanted to give us enough time, which is why they gave us through the end of 2024 to get the project completed.
Okay.
Thank you.
So your contract with them got extended to December 2024?
Correct. So the, like the target COD or what they call guaranteed is May 1st of 2024. But we can pay penalties if for whatever reason we're delayed, say by equipment or there's some labor challenges there, you know. Pick, pick, pick something that could cause a delay for the project, but we have to get it online no matter what by the end of 2024.
December 2024?
Yeah, December 31st, 2024.
Okay.
And then how many do you look to employ?
So the project is a 200-megawatt solar project and 100-megawatt battery. Which, just to give a little bit of color, it's about 1,200 to 1,300 acres out by the San Juan Generating current facility, just to the north and east of it. I think at sort of maximum, it's a little bit like a bell curve. We'll start the project and start doing roads and fences and things of that nature. But when we get to the peak, we're probably somewhere between two and 250 people on site doing construction work.
And that's for construction?
That's for construction. Yeah.
And then for maintenance, how many people for maintenance?
So maintenance for solar facilities, they're pretty automated power plants. So there's typically anywhere between two and four full-time people that are overseeing the project. Technicians coming out to work, do landscaping, vegetation management, and working on, you know, the equipment of the facility itself.
Okay.
And do you have a cost? At least a projected cost?
Yeah, I was dangerous throwing numbers out there, but I think the rough number is around a $400 million project.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? So we need to take action on this.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve resolution number 22-23-31.
Second?
Got a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Next, we have a consideration of preliminary plat for Sunset Ridge Subdivision Replat A and Paving Variance. David Varnett. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioner. This subdivision is about 58 acres, being divided into 38 lots. It's located at the intersection of Morning Star Drive, just Road 3000 and Road 3950, approximately half mile from the city limits of Farmington. The subdivision is to be developed in phases. The developer's engineer provided a phasing schedule and road development schedule. Opinions on the proposed subdivision were received from San Juan County Public Works, San Juan County Fire and Rescue, Mexico Environment Department, San Juan Soil and Water Conservation District, the Office of the State Engineer, and the New Mexico Department of Transportation. The developer's engineer has responded to and satisfied the concerns of the various agencies. The proposed road construction is double chip seal and move the asphalt surfacing required by the road policy. The developer's engineer provided the necessary information to request a paving variance as per the road policy and subdivision regulations. Staff has no objection to the variance. A public hearing was conducted by the county on November 28th, and staff requests approval of preliminary plat and paving variance.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, is it the chip seal that we have a lot on our county roads? The double chip seal or whatever it is that they're asking to do instead?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Beck said it is. I can defer to Mr. Perel if you needed more in-depth information, but it is. That's absolutely the case.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. I'll take a motion. First and, was that a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, no motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have consideration of approval to amend the nominal fee for volunteer firefighters. Chief Muller. Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have had the same nominal fees for our volunteers since 2008, which is $10 per emergency they respond on. And with the decline in volunteers, 20 years ago, we had almost 400 volunteers and 5,000 calls. This year, today, actually, we have 193 volunteers and 10,000 calls a year. So in an attempt to try to encourage more volunteerism, we'd like to raise that to $15 per emergency and then $60 per guaranteed block of time, about five hours, which is the max. We've had legal review, all the FLSA laws associated with the nominal fee system, and believe this is a prudent measure at this time. Stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. And that was, what is it right now, five?
$10.
$10 and you go on.
For emergency, $40 per five-hour block.
Okay.
Right now.
All right. Thank you.
So if they're there for five hours, then it's, it would be the sixth.
Right. Which is still barely minimum wage-ish, so.
Madam Chair, out of curiosity, what's causing the lack of volunteers? Like you said, we used to get them a long, long time ago, not so much now.
Your guess is as good as mine, but we assume, especially with COVID, people realize time at home, time with family is very valuable, and people aren't as willing to give that time up to just help the community without seeing that benefit right away. We're just trying every different way we can to incentivize that and try to figure out how to get more. But everybody's just so busy.
County manager, maybe we need to give some kind of incentives later on, you know, for volunteers. Maybe this, if we get some other extra money coming in, that might be something to consider.
Yeah. Madam Chair and Commissioner Tota Chaney, you may recall, we actually had been able to do that with premium pay. You all authorized the inclusion of the volunteer firefighters within the premium pay that we were able to extend to employees twice. And I know that's been extremely helpful, but yes, we, certainly our volunteer firefighters are always top of mind. Just the things we can do within the confines of the existing laws to assist them. You know, with the FLSA, we'd be very cautious because we wouldn't want them to be classified as employees. And that's why we've got, we're right up to the threshold and have the legal department review that to make sure we're full compliance there. And, you know, I don't know if you took a look at the packet, Chief Muller actually laid out, you know, if we were to have to staff, you know, five stations with 24 coverage, three-person shifts for three shifts. You know, with average wage associated with a firefighter, we're talking about an additional $3.375 million a year to the county budget. So it's not just, it's not just the cost savings to the county, it's the service to the community. But truly, it's, I mean, this is a really small incremental increase to help reward, to use your words, to help reward those folks that are coming to serve their community and cover their expenses. Their gas and their, and their meal that they may take on the way out and, you know, and playing their uniforms and just all the other things that come with responding to a call.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve to amend the nominal fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, after first and second, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we have consideration of the application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Ordinance. Number 120 for burning barrels, two dispensary, 577 U.S. Highway 64, Farmington. Ms. Wayne, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Mr. Brian Johnson, who is present today in the gallery, gallery. Owns and operates Burning Barrels Dispensary. It's the one right out just around the corner from here that opened a few months ago, a few months or two ago. He submitted another variance application to the Community Development Department for a second location that he is in the process of opening. It will be under his same state license, so he's currently licensed and can have more than one location under that same license. The new location is on Highway 64. He needs a variance from Section 3A, which is the minimum separation between residence requirement. There are five residences that he'll need a variance from. The nearest one is 188 feet away, and the harvest is 287 feet away. He's seeking that the variance to last the life of his business. We did have a public hearing in front of Officer, Hearing Officer Echols on November the 16th. At that hearing, no one appeared to speak against the variance. And Community Development did not receive any comments relating to this variance request. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions, which are included in your packet, and he recommends that the variance be granted.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do we have anybody comment on this mic from the start?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Sullivan? No, we did not. No, no comments at the public hearing or written.
Correct.
Madam Chair. I know there's an aerial picture of this, but help me out with what's next to it so I know roughly where it's at.
Would you like to hear from the applicant? He could probably describe it the best.
That'd be great.
You come on up to the microphone.
I'm Brian Johnson. I'm the owner of Burning Barrels and the future of Burning Barrels too. The, directly to my east is Gasco, which is a propane company. And directly to my west is a pump company. I don't know what they're, an oil field pump company. I don't know what their name is. Behind me is our residences, but there's several fences that divide my property from their properties. There's a fence around my property, then there's a fence around my landlord's property, and then there's a fence around their properties. So there's a lot of division there if I could.
That's your question?
You think you guys have made the qualified distance then?
Pardon?
You think you made the qualified distance?
I do.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Did you have something for Ms. Wayne, Ms. Lanier?
No.
No? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay. All right. So this is an action item, and I'll need a motion.
Don't move that. I'm moving to approve the entry on the dispensary. Burning Barrels Two Dispensary, 577, US Highway 64.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of notice of intent to adopt ordinance number 123, repealing ordinance number 70, which establishes the San Juan County Amateur Radio Emergency Communication. Mr. Sawyer.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in 2009, the Commission adopted ordinance number 70, which established the Amateur Radio Emergency Communications Team, which we call the IMCOM team. It's been serving the citizens of San Juan County for 15 years under the direction of the Emergency Manager to be called upon in the event of a communications emergency. So if everything went down, they would be able to use the ham radios to reach Santa Fe or wherever they needed to reach. Due to improvements in technology, including the recent purchase of a deployable cell phone tower, which has the ability to generate area cellular, satellite, and Wi-Fi anytime, anywhere. The Emergency Manager has determined that the service of the IMCOM team is no longer needed and that this is the appropriate time to repeal ordinance number 70. So in order to repeal ordinance number 70, we need to actually pass ordinance number 123, which repeals ordinance 70. So if you approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 123, the notice will be published and the adoption of ordinance number 123 will be placed on the agenda for consideration at the January 3rd Commission meeting.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Sawyer?
And we have Emergency Manager Mike Mest is here for any questions about the cell phone tower or reasons for.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, I do have a statement that I've read, that I've written as well, just to give you a little background, if I may. Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, I come before you today to provide a brief of what Mr. Sawyer just presented. In 2009, the previous administration determined the need to create a ham radio response team known as IMCOM. Upon the retirement of the past Emergency Manager, I inherited this team that has lost members over the years, has become stagnant, and has just recently lost his team leader through a recent resignation. As your Emergency Manager, I pride myself in being fiscally responsible. Having a response team for emergency communications is not feasible in today's society or in today's need for, in the emergency management community, being that we had recent upgrades in our county communication infrastructure. Fire and law enforcement also have redundant systems and numerous channels. Mr. Sawyer just commented that we took possession a few months ago of a cellular satellite on wheels, and my com supervisor maintains a sophisticated radio system as well as maintaining the 911 center. I'm by no means downgrading the ham radio operators in our community because they do serve a purpose. They will still independently operate and continue to operate as they always have. They will continue to use our county radio and our tel cell towers, our radio towers and our repeaters. And at this time, I'm only asking you to discontinue the response team that has created a fiscal responsibility on our taxpayers because of the need of individual radio equipment, training, meals, clothing, and liability insurance. So being fiscally responsible. Mr. Stark and I also met with the team, and their only concern was being able to retain some of their radio equipment, which through procurement, we're working that channel. There were no, there were no opposition. Mr. Stark helped me out in discontinuing the team from the members at the meeting. I'm happy to stand for any additional questions. Mr. Stark is with me as well as my communications supervisor to help as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, just to add to Mr. Mest's comments, specifically to the purchase of the equipment that some of the team members have. We're absolutely trying to work with them, follow state carement laws relates to disposition of the equipment to have them be able to purchase that at a fair market value. So, and that seems, because we haven't, didn't want to move forward on that process until you all thought this was the right move to start the process, but we'll absolutely work with our purchasing CPO, Diana Chapman, on that and extend some offer once they value the equipment. You know, of course, taking into account the purchase price, the useful life that's left, how much has been depreciated, et cetera, et cetera, so.
All right, thank you. If you have questions.
Madam Chair, how much a year does this program cost us?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beck said, I don't have those figures in front of me. It's a volunteer radio communication system that's needed for emergency response. Since 2009, this team's never been used. We've used them for parking lot assistance during mission of mercy and once during the COVID vaccination clinics. It's just the continuing ups and downs, the stagnation, and the need for, I want this type of equipment, I don't want this. The, for lack of a better term, the headaches that come with it through my office. I come before you to discontinue this emergency team that we haven't used. And fire and law enforcement are in the room as well. You're welcome to ask them if they would use this team. They haven't as well.
Could we at some point get what those numbers are?
Sure, Madam Chair and Commissioner Beck said.
I know this is just a notice of intent to public, so we can deal with it at the next meeting if this passes. I just, I want to have a whole picture.
We'd be happy to do that. I mean, the primary expense is going to be the capital, and it may not even qualify as capital depending upon the purchase price. But the radio equipment that's been purchased through time by the county and extended to the team for use, that was the whole purpose for the ordinance. Was if they're a communications team under the banner of an umbrella of San Juan County, then we could purchase with taxpayer dollars equipment to provide them to respond in the event we had a pretty catastrophic event. But now as technology has evolved. But now as technology has evolved, there really isn't a need for the team. And in meeting with the team members, they could agree with that. They, but they do want to continue on with, with, you know, their team. Not under the umbrella of San Juan County. We can provide the equipment at a, you know, fair market value. There seemed to be real interest in doing that. And they, they seem to understand, because Mr. Mestas has pointed out, the team has, numbers have declined through time. They recently lost their leader. You know, we met with, I think, a total of 11 team members that night.
Six to eight, I thought it was.
And so, yeah, I think we had a couple online via the phone, but no, no real opposition. They quite honestly see the handwriting on the wall in terms of, you know, how we even could possibly use them in the event of an emergency and use that as a backup communications tool.
So they don't have to be structured as originally as they do through the county and are supported by the means of how the county would support an emergency team that's within its confines. They can do it according to what, if they want to or not at the time. They don't have to respond if they don't want to.
Madam Chair, yeah, the purpose of the team was built to be able to respond with fire and law enforcement if radio communications would go down and fire and law enforcement couldn't use their radios. But that was kind of a far-fetched explanation because if fire and law enforcement's communications go down, theirs do as well. There are very few ham HF radio operators that were on the team, and most of them still communicated through the radio, communication, radio towers that Charles Rash continues to maintain, so.
And they don't have a leader to be able to take command of knowing everything, the ins and outs of ham operators as well.
Madam Chair, they do have leadership, a past leader, so that's not to say that they don't have leadership. But then again, it just barrels down to the recent leader resigned because of frustration to the lack of where they were going. When I took over, I wanted them to maintain home communications. If I would ever need them in a catastrophic emergency, I would want to have them at home use. And that, nothing's changed. They can, we could still use them. And the people that are out there, there's other radio groups. There's a Total Radio Communications Group, which Devin Neely's a part of as well. And we can still use them. I just didn't need a response team to respond like a volunteer fireman, to be fiscally responsible for them and everything that it takes to upgrade equipment and providing them meals for their training and new radios and clothing and things like that. Being fiscally responsible, they serve at the pleasure of the emergency manager. And as the emergency manager now inherited and taken over this team, I, I'm explaining that I just don't need them.
It's been about 13 years since they've really.
Yeah, 13 years since the ordinance became in effect. But Mr. Cooper had this team roughly working as a hobby team for approximately 10 years prior to that. And prior to his leaving, he created the ordinance to continue it going past his tenure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I've seen this movie. As soon as we pass this, the asteroid is going to come. I've seen this movie.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beckstead, that's what Mr. Cooper called me on the phone. You're going to need these guys, you're going to be sorry because China's going to attack.
But they're still out there. We still know where they are.
Yeah. And I've had, incidentally, Madam Chair, I've had six of them reach out to me. Mike, we understand what you're trying to do. We're still here for you. So they're not going away.
Good.
And we still have Mr. Neely, he's our operator, so.
Yeah.
As well as I'm, myself and Mr. Rash, we have ham radio licenses as well. So I can get on the radio and communicate to Santa Fe if I need it.
There you go. All right.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 170, 123?
Notice 123.
123.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have consideration to reinstate the retention bonus for the San Juan County Adult Detention Center. Hello, Mr. Webb.
Madam Chair, Commissioners. Remember, it's just money. So I'm here to ask for you to reinstate the retention bonus program and increase the amounts. At the July 6, 2021 Commission meeting, the initial retention bonus program was ratified. And it was employed to increase both recruiting and retention, which, which it did, but was allowed to expire in May of 2022. So I had some conversation with Mr. Stark back then and our numbers were actually coming up and we felt like we were coming into the summer, we're going to be in a good place staffing wise. Ended up not being the case. So here I am today. The initial program allowed for a $500 bonus at six months and $1,000 at the 12-month mark. That was the initial. As staffing shortage is still a huge issue at the ADC, I am requesting to reinstate the program and increase the amounts to $1,000 and $2,000 respectively. Also want to point out that this is just for retention, not recruitment. So it would only apply to our current officers, sergeants, lieutenants, camera monitors, training supervisor, safety and security compliance officer. So I think December 12 would be the start date of this if approved. Funding for the program would come from FY23 vacancy savings and anticipated FY24 vacancy savings associated within the ADC full-time positions life. Again, the program effective date would be 12/12/22 and would expire 12/12/23.
Okay. Thank you. So is from vacant, the money comes from vacancy savings? Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And? And, and did you see this effective during that 12-month period? The previous monies?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
As far as retention? When the previous retention program allowed $500 at six months?
Right.
So did you find that effective?
Asking for 1,000 and 2,000.
Right now. But in the, in the past, was it beneficial?
Oh, absolutely. Like I said, Mr. Stark and I had a conversation coming into May of this year about whether or not to extend it or let it expire, as was agreed by the Commission. And we felt like we were, our numbers were coming up and coming into the summer that we were going to be doing pretty well, but it ended up not being the case. So, but it was beneficial, so.
Okay. And are the, is there something in plans to recruit as well? You're not, you're not putting in recruiting in here?
No, and unfortunately, we've had some discussion there too. I'm not sure the recruiting component would be that beneficial at this time. We recently had the Shop With Your Cop program Saturday morning at Target. And I had a conversation with the manager there, Michelle, I don't know her last name. And I asked her about her employee retention and everything and if she was hiring. And she said, of course she's hiring, that she recently interviewed and extended job offers to 20 people and they accepted. And day one, four people showed up. So it is, I don't know, we're just, we're not alone in this. Unfortunately, the corrections and detention don't really get the acknowledgement that they deserve federally, state, state level and local level even, that we deserve. We don't get the money thrown at us like law enforcement does when it comes to firing bonuses and things like that. So, and I can tell you right now, the loss of a tenured, I want to say senior, but somebody with even a year's experiences is almost senior. But when we lose somebody that's already trained and knows what's going on and how to do their jobs, it's, it impacts us very much. And it's all negative. And that's at all levels.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Then, well, this is an action item, so I'll need a motion for this.
Well, with the money being available, I'd like to move the, to make a motion to consider to reinstate the retention bonus program for the SJCADC.
I'll second that.
Yeah, first and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have consideration of limited alcohol sales at Riverview Golf Course. And Mr. Hill will be presenting.
How tall is that guy? In 2009, San Juan County took over Riverview Golf Course from Central Consolidated School District. And over the past 13 years or so, we've had numerous requests on selling alcohol. Those requests have been few and far in between. This last year with Pinion Hills Golf Course, which is operated by the city of Farmington, it was closed for nine months for renovation. Brought a bunch of new players and a bunch of new tournaments out to Riverview Golf Course, which we really appreciate. The revenue's been great. But there seems to be even more of a renewed interest in bringing alcohol to the golf course. Pinion Hills has had alcohol at their golf course since 2015. So I worked with our staff, I've got Tony Mike Jr., my head professional, in the room, worked with him and his assistant golf pros and other staff, kind of looked into this request and what we could and couldn't do. Help with Joe Sawyer as to a government alcohol sales license, what that looked like, putting together some revenue numbers. And it seems like it'd be beneficial for us to try this. And what we're asking for today is consideration of a limited alcohol sales at Riverview Golf Course. We would like to start this on April 1 through November of this year and then come back to you in December to talk about what are revenue expenses and all that really look like? Any issues or concerns that were brought up?
So what are the liability issues or revenue issues that come up in December?
So in the liability issues, Cynthia Singleton has worked with our insurance companies and has found no issues or really any big concerns with our present insurance company. You know, and I think anytime you bring something new to a situation, whether it be alcohol or something else, there's always some little issue with liability or whatever that is. But our plan is to bring alcohol to the golf course approved by the Commission today and to have that in a controlled environment. All of our grill staff, all of our pro shop attendants, managers would all be trained under New Mexico's Safe Serve. So we would be very responsible in those sales of alcohol to individuals. Sales would be limited to the hours that the grills open. We would also have a cart that would deliver alcohol down the golf course Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And again, those people would be trained. We're also planning on staffing what we call a course marshal. And that course marshal would work during the times that we're delivering out on the golf course also. Just another eye on the course to maintain, you know, that we're doing what we should and that people aren't being over served. Our expected revenue is somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000. The cost of the beer, the cost of additional labor. I think our net profit would be $25,000 to $40,000. A little bit hard to tell since it's kind of a new adventure. And with that, staff recommends consideration of limited alcohol sales at Riverview Golf Course. And I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. Hey, any questions or comments on this?
Madam Chair. My daughter used to golf. And she used to tell me about the etiquette that goes with golfing. And she was very proper, I guess, about it. And I hope that continues because I think if you're in an organization or you do a sport like that, you know, you're held to a certain standard. So I can see, you know, those golfers that get out there, they, they want to maintain a good, positive atmosphere. I mean, we just heard about the first tee. So I hope they continue that.
Yes. Madam Chair and Commissioner Totucini, and I agree with that. You know, golf is called a gentleman's game. Obviously, lots of women play that game also. And I think the people that come out to enjoy the sport, as you just talked about, you know, it is, it is different than people going to bar and just drinking and maybe doing other things. You know, it's an activity sport, certainly not just people sitting around and making a big drinking day out of it. So I think our people would be, you know, professional in the way they consume the beverages.
Thank you for that. All right.
Madam Chair, is there, is there any evidence of alcohol already being consumed at Riverview?
Yes. And that's a great point, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beckstead. At the current time, we know people are bringing alcohol onto the golf course. You know, they bring it in coolers. And not that we have a blind eye to it, but it's also a, an issue that is going on and has been going on for a long time. And one of our plans is if this is approved today is that we limit or actually exclude coolers from being allowed on the course. I think with that, it also brings in that people who bring in an ice chest, you know, whatever's in the ice chest, the goal would be to empty that ice chest before we leave. And with us actually serving that and keeping track, monitoring, I think we have a little bit less liability that way and the ability to monitor a little better than we do today.
Any other questions?
Have you had any opposition? Because I've heard about it. Have you had anybody come to you with, with issues?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lanier, no. I've had nobody approach us to have any negative response or anything. Tony?
Come on up, Tony, if you're going to speak. Devin will holler at you.
Oh, I'm Tony Mike. I'm the head professional over at Riverview Golf Course, and I have not heard any opposition.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right.
And Madam Chair and Commissioners, I might just add that I did reach out to the mayor of Kirtland, Mark Duncan, who's also a member of the Jason Church, and just wanted to gain his feedback, given that we actually are in the town limits of Riverview Golf Course of Kirtland. They would not need to approve this in any fashion. But he did share with us that he was supportive of this, that he felt like the enhanced revenue that would come would be helpful to support the golf course. They've oftentimes thought about how the town of Kirtland can help support the golf course financially because it is a boom to the area in terms of golfers that come there, that may fill up on gas, eat lunch within the town limits of Kirtland. And so he did offer his support and just asked if you were to move forward with this, that I come to the next town of Kirtland meeting and share with them a similar presentation that Mr. Hill gave tonight. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions or comments? Okay. This is an action item, so do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we do the limited alcohol sales at Riverview Golf Course.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Did you say, pardon?
One no.
Okay, so one opposed, so motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My dad would let me in the house.
All right. So report from county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just wanted to, I only have one item for you tonight, so I know that will bring great, make Commissioner Beckstead quite happy.
There you go.
Short, brief update, but getting ready myself and Mr. Cox to head out to all the county departments like we do annually and give a state of the county update to all the employees. And we'll be doing that over the course of the next couple of months. I think it's important to make sure our employees are up to, up to date on what we've accomplished over the past year and what we're looking to do next year and some of the challenges and opportunities that exist as well as sharing with them. You know, you all hear about it, the finances of the county.
You know, you all hear about it, the finances of the county, but, but sharing that with, some of the awards that we've won, we're going to hear about an award here shortly that we've recently won and bringing the trophy back home. So, so I Yeah, well, don't spoil it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Now, you can see the top of his head.
Oh, right there.
He's been hiding and waiting. But I just make the offer that if any of you wanted to participate, and I was happy to have you come along. We're putting a schedule together now. Of course, we can only have two Commissioners at a time. But I just wanted you to be aware that we're doing those and if you wanted to participate, to give you that opportunity. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. All right. And department heads.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm proud to report to you that our three billboards are lit and powered and under our control. So you can look for some valuable messaging going out on our billboards.
I saw that.
There's one in Spencer Vale at the fire station, there's one at the water commission building in Farmington, there's one at Kirtland Fire Station One.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have something?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Lisa. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm just here to give you a really brief activity report from MWRC. In the process of preparing some data for our Medicaid consultant, we did a comparison of number of encounters and number of clients six-month period of December 1, 2021 to May 31, 2022, and then June 1 to November. That's kind of where we were. We found, we grew 134% in encounters, number of encounters. And the number of clients between those, for those two six-month periods is 83% growth. And so, so this was a period, a very challenging period of time. We were down three employees at one point. And so I was really surprised and pleased that we actually did that. Gosh, no wonder we were busy. Just wanted to share that with you. Additionally, we found that 60% of clients are connected within the same day that they come to see us. And almost, well, 36% are connected with one in one week, a very small percentage. We work with a lot longer, like for situations where they need IDs, a security card, a birth certificate, things like that. So those, those takes a lot more time. So really pleased how much we've grown. We're still down two employees. But we're, I told Mike in the, in the report that we were kicking behind, but I use a different word.
You did. Madam Chair, it was great. I was going to mention that because she laid out the statistics and all the improvement and the number of clients and encounters. And at the very end of, of her spreadsheet, she put, Mike, we kicked butt. Three exclamation points. And I concur. They certainly have. We appreciate everything you do for our community.
A great staff. And so come by and see us so you can meet the new staff. We hired these, these two new staff and they started making second, our, our second peer or our first peer support replacement started October 31. So come meet them.
Excellent. Has there been a replacement for Sue's position?
There has not. That position just closed. There were two applicants. So I'm going to be reviewing them this evening and get some interviews in. But this is maybe fifth or sixth round. I don't know if HR is here, but yeah. It's been really hard to, to get that one filled. So.
Well, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Things going.
Thank you. It's been really fun.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other reports?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to know who, whose idea it was to change the lights out front to go from solid green to the Christmas colors. Do we know whose idea that was?
Devin, go ahead.
Mr. Neely's idea?
Oh, no. That was an initiative by our Parks Department and specifically electrician Jay Allen. Took that on. He said, do you want it red and green? And I said, I don't care. And I looked out later and it looks really nice.
It's a great idea. And if it was you, I was going to invite you to sing a solo Christmas carol. Do you want to sing that on his behalf?
No, that's coming later. But you, you'd much prefer hearing Jay sing than I.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I just had an update and a comment for you tonight. Keeping an eye on the increase of RSV, the flu and COVID here in San Juan County. Hospital numbers have increased, as well as Innovations spoke to emergency room physician today. And they're seeing a lot of RSV in children here in our community, as well as the Department of Health put out a new public health order last week in regard to RSV at the U and M Hospital. It's increasing numbers. Finally, the comment is, I'll be thinking of you tomorrow, Mr. Lanier, December 7, 2017. Will never forget the Aztec school shooting. My office as long, as well as the first responders in our community responded to that. Both of you will be in our thoughts and hope our office will as well. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. All right. Is there any other reports?
Madam Chair, speaking of Christmas
Right. I'd like to say, Mike, come over here and have a look down on the roads.
I'm, I'm sorry?
On the road at 5500 and the Largo Bridge.
Oh, Mr. Perrell. Okay. I thought you said Mike.
I did, too.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Mr. Sullivan. So you're talking Road 4990, 4450 and Five Mile Bridge. So Mr. Stark, myself, and Jim Cox had an opportunity to review a preliminary report from our consultants. It was just two weeks ago, maybe, before Thanksgiving. And I, I think we all came to the determination that to provide you information based on that preliminary report would likely result in more questions than answers. So we collectively made the decision to wait until we have a final report to present, which is likely, I believe you said, late January? Is that what you recall?
Late February, early March.
Late February, early March.
She's close.
So, so they're making progress. Again, it's a fairly inclusive study that's looking at transportation routes in and around Largo Bridge, a very detailed drainage analysis of Largo Wash itself and what impacts that might have on, on any structure in that wash. And again, great information was presented to us at that review. But it not being final, it didn't seem that it was yet ready for public consumption.
What about the 5500? Now, we're through the ridge over the river down there, right?
Were you asking Commissioner Sullivan about the chip seal?
Yeah.
That's going to follow. So I think that's the question.
Oh, so yes, indeed, we have a capella grant for, I think it was 150,000. Network is planned for this coming summer. There'll be a crack seal and chip seal.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You know, this month is when, it's a time of giving. And there's been bazaars, craft fairs by schools, churches. And I went to the charity bowl at San Juan College. And I found a nice bowl that had the four colors that the Navajos use. Somebody had made it. And I went, I bought two ceramic containers. And one of the workers approached me and she says, that's made by Jason. He's a blind individual and I guess he, he does the painting on it and somebody fires it for him. So it's really interesting how these students come and they create all these ceramics for $10. And then you get a nice bowl of green chili stew. There was basil tomato, chicken noodle, and I think it's Italian winning soup. So, you know, all that is going on. And then also the festival of trees occurred. And I'm so proud of the county workers, you know, the, the food for the Echo. And God bless the Commissioners, you know, that was, we had to match Mr. Beckstead, Commissioner Beckstead. And so we, we put money together. So, I mean, it's, it's just a good feeling this month when you give them. And so I thank for everybody who's, who's done that. So thank you so much, especially the staff for winning that.
All right. Is there any other reports from elected officials or department heads? Looks like there's not. So comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes. And to subjects the Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has been, has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment to the Commission at this time? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for letting me come in and talk to you. As Mike alluded, this is about the wonderful I'm sorry, it's Nanette Pinkney. And Jim told me that, too. And I go, that's okay. Listen to my boss, you know. That's okay. I think he's getting used to it. So. So this is the wonderful Mr. Potato Head Award that you guys have won this, this year. So you guys did an amazing job. And so just want to congratulate you because you more than doubled the food with the drive than what was collected last year. And just to kind of give you the, the high level, over 13 years, 106 tons of food, which is equal to 211,366 pounds, which equates to 176,138 meals for our community. That is absolutely amazing. And you guys brought it home this year by more than doubling what you collected last year, just yourself as San Juan County. Between food and the amount of dollars collected, it was amazing. And you guys are now our number one food drive for Echo Food Bank. Congratulations. Congratulations. I just want to thank you for your continued support, not only with the annual food drive, but you guys also provide annual funding for our holiday backpack program for children. So we expect to do a little over 700 backpacks this year. So that, that's amazing. Really important for those kiddos who may be facing food insecurity outside of school when they get those nice warm meals. Truly takes a village to fight food insecurity. And we all do that together. And in the wise words of Mr. Devin, while y'all won this trophy, the real winners are those that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. So when does the trophy go now?
Well, the trophy's going to go in our trophy case. It's been 12 years, right, Devin? Did you say? 10 years since it was last here. Partly because Aztec and Bloomfield, who have a lower headcount, employees are usually able to have more pounds per employee. But with this year, we were able to surpass them. Kudos to the fire department. That was the reason that we, we ended up on top. They won the enter department challenge. And we'll be doing Gemini, Mr. Cox and I will be sponsoring a pizza party for, for them. Maybe, maybe breakfast burritos, I think, last we talked. But nonetheless, they'll be, they'll be rewarded for their charitable contributions. They went above and beyond the call of duty. They had a secret weapon. Well, they had a couple groups they work with that added to the pot for the employees that contributed so graciously. So, yeah.
Just let me know when those burritos are happening.
Will do. But great job by all of our employees. Couldn't, couldn't have summed it up better. Yeah, we, we have a very caring group here. We're very fortunate to have the employees that we have here at San Juan County. They, they pull through for our community each and every day in special events like this.
Thank you. All right. And was there anything else? Not, then, well, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.